And we're back on a neighbor's choice. I'm your host, David Gronoski. I'm here with Anthony Sabatini, our good friend from Florida. How you doing, sir?
Ever been better. Great to be back on the show.
It's great to have you on. Now, you're always doing a lot of different stuff to fight different causes for freedom at different levels. So there's a few things going on that I saw you're involved with, and I thought, let's catch up and see what's going on. As of today, some breaking news, you've decided to file a lawsuit against a school district in central Florida, Polk County, right? And we have a national audience as well as our Florida listeners and viewers. So want to kind of set the table for that. This is the same school district that I did a story on a little while ago, in which we uncovered some unsavory hiring practices, in which they brought on someone to be in charge of all of online learning, who was 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 named as a as a subject in ongoing civil litigation regarding, you know, some issues with hiring a person who was a convicted serial child abuser. And I felt like it was completely disrespectful to the citizens of Polk County, the taxpayers of Polk County, to when you have allegations that serious, even if it's a civil matter, that you should let that be resolved before you put someone like that in charge of children's education, just to make sure everything's, you know, top notch. And I think that's a valid thing to do. So I wrote that story and that got some conversations going. But here we are again, talking with, talking about the Polk County School Board. Tell us what's going on with this.
Yeah, so it's a local story, but with definitely national implications, probably will eventually be a national story, because the national issue is that the school boards are allowing crazy obscene books into the school book system, to the libraries, into the classrooms, sometimes even the textbooks themselves, that have crazy obscene, highly illegal sexually explicit content, stuff that you don't really believe until you see it. And then you see it and you're like, really? They're giving this to 12 year old kids? So I represent CCDF, County Citizens Defending Freedom. It's a large political entity down here pushing for, you know, conservative change, basically, in local and state government. And they have had issues with the way Polk County's dealt with parents who object to books. So if you make a basic objection under state law, the school board is supposed to have a process where you can come in, make the objection, there's a hearing, you can have a right to be heard, they can say that the book is good or bad, and then have a final vote, the school board is the final authority. And the school board, just crazy, the sort of arrogance you see in some local governments, they've just not done it at all. They've just decided not to do it. So they have this written policy, they don't do it. So they have right now hundreds of very pornographic books, two of which we display the content in the lawsuit that we filed today, CCDF versus Polk County School Board, it was filed this morning at nine AM. And just really trying to make it that not just that school, but every school board in Florida, and hopefully school boards across the country, do their job and get rid of books that have no educational merit and are full of pornography.
And they use this concept of like, and you can tell me the court case names, I don't remember all this stuff, but that's your world of the law, that there's this precedence for, you know, artistic merit, right? If something has artistic merit, you're supposed to not have this censorious policy as it pertains to, I guess that would be more public libraries rather than children's libraries like schools have? What, where has that been?
Funny about that, so that's the Miller test, but that actually has to do with whether a book can be banned at all in any context. When you're talking about government ascribing books to its own school children, the state of Florida reserves the unilateral right to put any books up or no books at all. They, if we, the citizens of Florida, so here are the hundred books we want schoolchildren to have access to, we have the right to do that. Now, if it was, if it was truly book banning, like they like to claim, they always sensationally claim, anybody that wants to get rid of these sexually illegal, you know, obscene books are trying to ban the books. The truth of the matter is, no one's trying to ban anything, because you can get those books anywhere in the private sphere. And I don't know anybody that's trying to get Amazon to take them down or something like that. They just don't want them to be in the school libraries and in the school classrooms, obviously.
Right.
So that test is helpful in understanding what the definition is between pornography and sexually obscene material versus something that has sexual depictions in it, but has, you know, literary merit. For example, most of Shakespeare, there's always puns and allusions that have sexual connotations, sexual innuendo, things like that.
Yeah.
But they're part of a drama, which is greatly, you know, awarded and weighed by its literary merit. That's the difference. So.
I remember one of the school board members of Polk County that you're filing this lawsuit against today in the past has made a claim saying something to the effect of, well, if we go along with removing these books that have these graphic content for children at our school libraries, that are accessible by what, elementary kids? What's the age?
Yeah, pretty much any, but it's supposed to be age appropriate, certain books for certain ages. But the truth of the matter is, ends up being all of them available to all.
So they're not behind a glass or anything or something, they're available for open picking up at the library?
Correct.
And so these school libraries, and this person on the Polk County School Board said, well, if we do this, we're going to have to ban the Bible, because the Bible has all kinds of graphic, sexual and violent stuff right there. So do you want to go down that slit? So that was her message saying, you better watch yourself, you crazies that want to take these obscene books off, because if we apply your standard, the other guys are going to come in that don't like the Bible and use that same standard to remove things like the Bible from the kids having access to it in the library.
Well, the irony is that the obscenity test and the famous case of Miller, you deliver us California, it would never, it could never, if you use that test, which we don't really doubt in the school system, but if you did, it wouldn't result in banning the Bible or Shakespeare or anything that had even a semblance of merit. The books that actually this group, CCDF, objected to are, it's hard to argue anything but pornography. It's sometimes three or four page passages from top to bottom of just very, very explicit sex scenes, sometimes incest, lots of oral sex, different positions. I mean, it's really graphic pornograph, like there's nothing like that in the Bible or Shakespeare or historical American literature that eludes the sex or has a quick maybe sexy as part of a plot about a larger, you know, element of the human experience. These are literally just graphic lewd books that have really creepy scenes, and they're sensationalistic. I mean, that's why I assume some people would want to read them. It's just this lurid stuff that amuses, you know, simple minds, I guess, but has no educational merit whatsoever. The truth is, we shouldn't even be having the debate about whether they should be. I think that debate's closed. The questions, I think the school board, if they're honest, they would just say, yeah, these books have no merit, they shouldn't be there. But do we want to ban them or, you know, kick them out or not? That's the question. And in this case, the answer is obvious, yes. But there's definitely no merit to the books. You'll never hear people defending the books particularly. They'll, they'll use abstract arguments like, oh, you know, getting rid of a book is bad. But if you actually, you know, try to defend one of these books and the passages of each of these books, it's impossible. That's why they never do it.
So why, why did this, how long have these books been on the shelves? Do we know? Who's putting them there? Who's the one making the decision? Is some weirdo that's in the bureaucracy of these little school districts? Why are they popped up everywhere?
Yeah, pretty much. It, it, most of these books are about 20, 20 to 10, or sometimes five years old. The two we have detailed, I think, what was it, 2012, one's from, I think, 2014.
That's when they were published or when they were put on the shelf?
Published, and then I think they came on the shelf within a couple of years, maybe one or two years. I know these have been on for at least three or four years, these books that we indicate in the, in the lawsuit. But there's been 50 or 60 that the group has objected to. The truth of the matter is, as America's gotten just really, really woke, gender bending and getting rid of gender roles and gender norms, sexual norms, sexual standards and behavior, all that's going out the window. These books are just another example of that. People are indulging in that, they're trying to push that. These are like self-proclaimed artists who, who have literally, their conscious objective isn't literary merit, but to try to destroy and remove and desensitize people, especially children. Because if you don't change the minds of children, you don't ever, you'll never change the, you know, the society as a whole. And so this is just obviously the most quick and efficient, smartest way to try to continue the cultural revolution that the left has been nonstop at.
So what's their logic here that a kid might have a chance to pick up this graphic book and then be like, ruin their, their morals that their family taught, and then like, that'll like make them break up with their mom and dad's allegiance? And they'll go and do some radical new, is that the concept here?
Yeah, but probably not as consciously. It's just children thinking that these are normal books, that instead of Shakespeare, instead of reading John Steinbeck or whatever, they're eating this kind of stuff and thinking this is normal, this is cool, and it desensitizes them. And it provides them a, a different worldview than the ones we grew up with, so.
So who, what is the ultimate goal in doing that, to, to, to make, to desensitize children to, you said extreme depictions of things like incest and stuff? Why would, who would want to do that? Who wants to fund that? Who wants to put that through? I mean, I could see it popping up. Here's the thing that confuses me. I could see it popping up kind of here or there, but it seems like every school district in America has this exact same issue going on with like the exact same Usual Suspect books popping up for kids as young as kindergarten. Like, why, why is this happening?
The, 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 the truth of the matter is, the left just wants to get rid of any sort of standards and in behavior, any kind of culture. They want to sort of destroy norms and culture of Western civilization. And then you might wonder why, it's because they truly believe in their heart that if you can erase all of the bondages of culture, that goodness arises from that. That basically all these norms and responsibilities and sort of impressions we all give each other are really like chains, right? It's all this Rousseauian project. If you can just all this down, break all this down. Everybody is more free, more individualistic, less judged, more happy, there's less nonsense, less lies. That's how they look at it. It's a radical, individualistic, radical egalitarian worldview that's completely and totally false, obviously, probably too long for this short podcast to discuss, to, to the length necessary to understand it. But that's what they believe. Some of them don't actually consciously believe, it's just what they feel, it's what they feel to be true. And these books help erase and erode Christian civilization, you know, traditional Western civilization, family-based civilization, American civilization, just slowly but surely. And that's good for them and their worldview, because they want to see all that removed and they want to see a new sort of utopian worldview created. And what they don't realize is, when you atomize people to that extent, you get rid of all norms and you get rid of all identity and culture, you're creating a cold, lonely, meaningless world. But that, that doesn't really matter to them.
So, you know, again, it's not about the idea that everybody, it's not like there's hundreds of copies of each of these bizarre books in each of the libraries. It's about getting your foot in the door, right? And just kind of moving the needle, moving the needle forward, right? You know, you get, like, what are the degree of, like, how, 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 how many of these degenerate type books are available in libraries in Polk County? Do we know, like, in the school libraries? Is it like two libraries or 50?
50, 60. Yeah, that's the other thing they've done. Instead of having a central library where a concerned taxpayer or parent can go in and say, I objected to this book, they actually try to compartmentalize each school's system. So that way, it's impossible for the average citizen to just get a book kicked off the shelf as sexually, you know, explicit and illegal countywide. And so it's just another, it's just another tool that they've used to try to stretch this thing out.
Why are school boards so insistent, well, well, let's just focus on, why are the Polk County School Boards so insistent on not just giving people the opportunity to get these books out? Why, why, why are they, what's the, what's their logic?
They're part of a subculture in society, you know, we call them educrats. And then there's sort of little weird educational world. They can't stem, it's the most arrogant, technocratic, bureaucratic sort of subculture bubble that anyone could ever live in. And so when they see, in their eyes, average people, rubes, outsiders, ignorant, ignorant people, right? That's how they view the average parent, right? These are the same people that, you know, you saw the Obama administration officials say, you know, these parents, this is why, you know, Virginia turned into a Republican state in the last governor election. The frontrunner or the nominee for Democrat Party, Terry, what's his name, we saw for the Clintons, he said, you know, these parents don't know, like the school board and the teachers know what's good for the student. The parents need to stay out of this, they're not trained experts. That attitude is why they fight this. This is really, like I said earlier, it has nothing to do with particular words on the page of each book. They don't take an earnest look at each book and wonder if it has educational merit. They simply look and say, here are some outsiders that don't share our sort of educrat worldview, and they're coming in trying to tell us what to do, we're going to recoil, we're going to fight back, we're going to push back naturally. And the spineless school board members that are quite literally surrounded with tens of thousands of these educrat employees that they think that they work for, they don't think that they work for the taxpayers and the parents. They think they work for the employees of the institution, which is the first most insane fallacy that a lot of these school board members make. That's why they recall, that's why they push back. It has nothing to do with the content.
Yeah, they look at the, they look at the taxpayers that vote in elections, kind of like a nuisance, like, what do I got to do to manipulate these idiots so they leave me alone so I can get back to working for the bureaucrats? That's kind of what their mindset is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Have you polled them, you know, do you think that elections for school would should be removed? Then instead, you should just have, you know, a permanent bureaucracy that just is in charge of this function of society without any kind of outside influence, right? Democrat influence, you know, people, they'd probably vote, yeah. They'd be like, yeah, just get these people out of here, we know what needs to be done. You know, we know how to raise these kids and, you know, try to limit the role of the parent. I mean, that's really what it's all about.
Yeah, that's what our democracy is starting to mean more and more, is not actual democratic oversight, but rather the institutions, that they're the ones that represent democracy, not the actual persons that are actually paying for everything.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's the single most Orwellian thing going on in America today is the claim, my democracy is literally the opposite. They want to get rid of any sort of political accountability or democratic accountability or popular opinion, and they want to replace it with expert, technocratic, centralized administrative state apparatus. They want sort of trained so-called experts who come out of, you know, the college or university system, go into the government bureaucracy, and then they'll make the rules and choose the ends, not just the means, but the ends of society or whatever function of society, and we just are here along for the ride. That's what they really want. That's what they mean by, you know, building our democracy. They want the absolute opposite of democratic accountability.
So with this lawsuit proceeding, what, what do you intend to affect with this lawsuit? What changes are looking to be made with this lawsuit? And then what should we expect next?
There's five or six quick, small things. I'll just go through them really fast. So one, they need to keep the meetings of the review committee open. They're not doing that. Don't even allow the parents who make objections to the vote to speak at the review committee. So that's completely legal, that's low hanging fruit, that should have never been the case. And that, that needs to get fixed immediately. They need to fix the appeals process. So if you object to a book and then they say, all right, we're going to have a meeting on this, we think it's a great book, we're going to keep it, you should, you have the right to an appeal based on the policy. Well, they don't actually allow you to appeal. You'll write a letter saying, I'm appealing your decision to keep the book. And then they just ignore it, quite literally, they just ignore it, even though it's supposed to go directly to the school board at that point. That's another issue. A few others are just getting rid of the books that are purely obscene in and of themselves. Yeah, the, the actual decision to keep them was incorrect decision. And so suing on behalf of, you know, parents and taxpayers, a judge should be able to decide whether these books truly are pornographic, which they are. I mean, obviously they are. If you look at the language, like I said, they don't defend them in their own terms. And then there's a few others for ministerial things, but the school board could fix this immediately if they just amend the policy, ascribe to the policy, get rid of the books, and focus on listening to parents.
Is this, has there ever been a lawsuit like this before in America?
No, no, this is the first one. There's been some threats throughout the state, Brevard County had a, which is two counties over in central Florida, Cocoa Beach area, very populated county, just like Polk County, big Republican county also, had almost these identical issue, but nobody sued over this issue. So this is what they would call.
Just the first time in the country that we know of that this has happened?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, if there's something similar, it would be a different statute, different rule regarding the books. So under Florida statute 1,006.28, the statute says every school board has to have a policy on how to deal with these objections, and they need to, you know, get rid of books that have been objected to validly. This is the first time somebody sued over that statute.
So where, where will this be held? This is my ignorance of the law. How will this be, this will be adjudicated on a state level or this could be a national precedent?
Circuit court in Polk County. So it's, we filed this morning in Barto, which is the county C for Polk County. You know, we'll see what happens with the case, could be a quick trial, could be a long thing. And then if they want to appeal it, it would appeal to the appellate court in Tampa. Then after that, it's Florida spring court if they don't like the decision, and we'll see what happens.
Very good. I appreciate that information. We'll be watching to see what happens with that. This will be the first time that a judge will have access to some of these books and, and wow, that's interesting. It'll be interesting to see what precedent might come from this.
Yes.
I want to turn, while I have you, I know you're also, you know, you were in the state house in the state of Florida in legislature. You're now running for US Congress against an incumbent, right? A Republican incumbent.
Correct.
Tell us about that race. Why are you in it? And what are you looking to accomplish with this victory?
So I'm running in District 11, which is Lake County, Sumter, and Western Orange County, which is Orlando, basically everything west of Orlando in the suburbs. And I'm running against a, a very much the uniparty style Republican congressman, very centrist, votes with Joe Biden about half the time, voted for all the continuing resolutions, omnibus bills, and bills to give hundreds of billions of dollars in foreign aids to countries that we have absolutely no material interest in, in being involved with. And he's just your absolute rubber stamp congressman, probably really still in office only because he wants that paycheck, $175,000 a year paycheck, just to sit there and do nothing. He also, weirdly enough, has the worst attendance record in Congress, which is 4% of missed votes. Most congressmen list miss about 1% of their votes, but not 4%. So he's sort of just a lazy guy, been in office 44 years. His name is Dan Webster. Most people don't know, you say the name, most people say, yeah, I've never heard of him. And if they see a picture of him, they don't want to vote for him because he looks like he's been in that office for almost 50 years, which he has. So, long story short, we're trying to take this guy out, replace him with an America First, true principle, limited government, you know, founding fathers aligned Republicans. So that's why I'm running.
What, what policies do you think he has been not sufficient in, in your standard of what you think America needs?
The biggest issues right now are the ones he's most absent on, which are the border, the economy, and term limits. I think we need term limits for US Congress. Most people do. He's staunchly opposed to them. He thinks that no politician should ever have term limits. So he's, he disagrees with 91% of Republicans on that. When it comes to the border, he's continued to vote for the open border. We should not be funding any budget that doesn't include a sealed border. I think it's more important at this point to shut down the government if they're not willing to shut down the border. You're negligent and complicit in the destruction of this country. If you continue to vote to keep a government open, which is purposely keeping the border open. We have a purposefully open border for those who do get through and get caught. They're sent further into the country with cell phones, credit cards, and thousands of dollars of other perks. So, so he's voting for all of that, obviously. And so that's a real problem, that's why he's got to go. And then when it comes to the economy, all of this inflation, inflation, by the way, has not slowed down. Price of goods went up just 0.5%, just in the last 30 days, January to February, those numbers just came out today or yesterday. He's been terrible on that because he's voting for the insane spending and mismanaged economy that Biden is leading by continuing to be a status quo vote with the uniparty Republicans. So on all the issues that matter the most, border, term limits, you know.
Has he been voting for the Ukraine aid and all that?
Absolutely, yeah. He's voted for every single bill to give 1, 2, 300 billion dollars to Ukraine. God knows how much they've collected from us over the last two and a half years, and he loves it, he's all in.
Yeah. Well, do you think they need to raise the pay of representatives in the US House?
No, no, I think it's fine. 175 is pretty normal, if you ask me.
Yeah. I was just wondering, you know, you know, it seems like they get in here for that income, and then they get all their other incomes when they're making deals with all the, all the lobbyists and everything on the way out, right? And I was wondering, if you actually paid them more upfront, then maybe that would disincentivize the type of low quality folks that end up going into those positions, because it's like, oh, okay, I'll take that job with that income, but I'm going to be a millionaire outside once I'm a whore to everybody, you know, policy wise, so.
There's a, there are dozens of good members that are examples of how you're supposed to be in Congress. Obviously, we, we know and like many of them, Matt Gaetz, Thomas Massey, Scott Perry, Andy Biggs, Paul Gosar, members of the Freedom Caucus mostly, who are happy to live on the salary and they don't own stocks, they're not buying and selling stocks, they don't believe that Congress should own stocks, they don't believe that Congress should have any sort of ability to solicit a job from a lobbyist firm or influential business while they're sitting in Congress, which happens all the time. That's the rotating door we always hear about, and we need to shut that down. And so when I was in the state legislature here in Florida, I did House Bill 1, the biggest ethics bill ever filed in the history of Florida, which would have banned anyone from soliciting a job from any entity that had a material interest with the state, whether it be a vendor, whether it be a lobbyist, could be a state agent, anything, you're not allowed to ask for jobs, and if you do, it must be automatically disclosed. You know, and it should be illegal, but if you're on your way out, at least it needs to be disclosed. We did various versions of the bill over the years. But I also was the only legislator in Florida to never take a state pension. I never took the pension, I'm not in the state retirement system, never collected any retirement benefits. And Dan Webster, by the way, sitting in Congress right now, he's got, he's already had a full, he's already had a full retirement just from being in the state legislature in the past. So every year, he collects tens of thousands in retirement pay for, for being a state legislator. It's the biggest clown show ever, the ban, it should be completely illegal. And so I was very proud to be the first and only legislator in Florida to not take the universal free healthcare or the pension program. I actually had to go out of my way to opt out of it, because when I got elected, they told me I couldn't get out. And when I refused to be in it, I literally had to like go through like a Kafkaesque bureaucratic, you know, sort of morass of paperwork to get out of the system, because they tried to incentivize you to, to stay there. And that's why you see career politicians, because they build up their retirement. So they like to jump from job to job, as long as it's state loan government, and they sit, they end up with hundreds of thousands in retirement benefits at the end, which is wrong, it should be wrong. People who deserve it, like somebody works, you know, at Parks and Rec for the local city, yeah, they deserve retirement, but not the politicians. They don't deserve retirement. It's not supposed to be a full-time job anyways.
What do you think about Speaker Mike Johnson, what he's done?
He seemed promising when he first got elected, but he's turned out to be really weak, really weak. I'm like alarmed at how bad he's been. Now he's really retracting and backing up all the things he's done. He's done several continuing resolutions and omnibus already. I think he should be gone. You know, I don't think he was the right choice, but he was better than McCarthy. It was absolutely the right decision to scout McCarthy, best decision Congress has ever made. Matt Gaetz was 100% right. Just getting, see, that, the problem is, you can't see the benefit. Like, people see, oh, McCarthy's gone, looks like we have narrow margins, it's hard to understand why this benefits. By deleting one of the most corrupt members of the swamp, you lessen the, just the influence of K Street, the influence of the lobby corps, the anti-MAGA, anti-America First, anti-conservative sentiment inside the Republican Party has been disabled by only a small percentage, but it's been disabled. And there's many benefits of why we should have got rid of McCarthy. Might need to get rid of Mike Johnson too, we'll see.
Are you against all foreign aid, is that right? Or do you think you want some aid?
No, I'm okay with loans to countries. So if we build a program and say, okay, we're going to loan you money, like World War II style.
Isn't that what Lindsey Graham's doing though, to try to sucker in more Ukrainian money?
No, 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 not anymore. No, no, no. Okay, so two questions here. Any money or form of support to Ukraine whatsoever? Absolutely not. But in the few countries, if we could ever prove that there was some serious material interest, let's say, go back to Central America, you know, we had Haiti, Haiti, country of Haiti about to collapse. Many other countries, Central America have gone far left, taken over by socialists, et cetera. If there is a time and place where a nearby country or country that has a material interest on us that we have a benefit of helping, if we were ever going to loan, assist with material support of some type, it should only be structures alone. Not to say that all the countries we give foreign aid now should get loans. I would probably cut the list by 99%, and the very few that we decide to give support to, it would be in the form of a loan or zero. I mean, it's easy to say absolutely zero, that's probably what I really want. But if there's some country out there that we are going to try to help, because we know for fact it's going to help us in some way, then it would be.
With a sweetheart interest or a nice, big giant interest like Americans have to pay for their?
Yeah, yeah. It would, it would be the opposite we have now. It would be strings attached. It would be more of a trade. It would be, you know, we're going to give you material assistance in exchange for something that you're going to give us. I mean, there's absolutely no, it's a unilateral, one-way street right now. We just give foreign aid with no strings attached all the time, usually for emotional reasons, it's kind of silly.
Well, you mentioned Haiti, there's a guy named Barbecue who's in charge now? What is going on over there? And what would, what, what's going on with the Haitian folks that are trying to come to America and Florida? What's, what's happening there?
Well, it's been, you know, the, one of the poorest and most dysfunctional countries in the world for quite a while now. And somehow it's getting worse. So, yeah, they have criminal overlords now that have taken over the presidential mansion and transitioned the government. So you have basically a corrupt, you know, criminal gang leader in charge of the country. And to be completely honest, you know, some people would be outraged by that, but the truth of the matter is, anything that keeps that country stable and keeps hundreds of thousands of Haitian refugees from rushing onto Florida and American shores, I'm okay with. I, I really don't care what happens in Haiti. My biggest thing is just keeping the refugees out of our country.
Well, I really appreciate your time. And where can people follow you on social media or wherever else they want to follow your work with both what you're doing in law and, and your race here?
Sure, absolutely. So sabatiniforcongress.com is my congressional website. But appreciate any support anybody can give. And if you want to follow what I'm doing legally, just follow me on Twitter or at my law firm webpage. And if you want to follow what I'm doing legally, just follow me on Twitter or at my law firm webpage, sabatini law PA.com. Private association, not Pennsylvania. And, uh, you can always give me a call directly to if you have a question, 352-455-2928.
Well, that's good. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. Always great to talk to you.
Thanks David. Talk to you soon.